This meeting to order. Trinity County Commissioners Court will meet, and this is Tuesday, April the 8th, two thousand twenty-three, nine AM, Commissioners Court room at one sixty-two West First Street, Trinity County Courthouse, Grove and Detective. We'd like to all welcome on here. And on your behalf, the Land of Order, it's going to take a prayer to say that we believe.
How are you? Southside is. This point, heaven and father, while we just come to you as I'm looking to know how good you is, asking to bless this court as a most special ground to your God. Bless each and every one that's already been to you, and you did my operating in the best of their ability to your God. Bless each and every one that's gathered here today, dear Lord, bless us all individually and bless us all collectively, dear God. Give them the resources that they need to do their job in the best of their manner. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Complying with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
In the public forum, Mr. Randy Dupree. Welcome. How are you?
Good. Thank you for making me right. After a brief conversation with Commissioner Truss, I'm here to just present myself to the court as a possible means for transportation for raw materials through your county roads. I myself have fifty trucks and work for EOG Resources to do their rock exclusively. Have for twelve years. I'm also in partnership with Michael J. Miller. We run out of Lufkin, Texas. He has access to forty to fifty trucks. So we can, on jobs that you have, quantities on particular days, hauling out of Casa or whatever, we can get you quantities where you get your jobs done quickly. So I offer very reasonable rates, plenty of insurance, six million dollars in liability insurance, excellent, excellent safety ratings. So that's just what we offer. That was mine. That's my presentation. I've left some cards.
And where do you have it?
Well, I live in Pollock, but I personally work down in South Texas mostly.
Yes.
But I'm at property wells, a building shop there. I'll be running with some of my trucks there. Michael, Michael Miller's out of Lufkin. He has access, he has twenty company trucks plus an additional twenty to forty contract trucks that we use. So.
Most people don't know where that's at because it's in the country we know because we order our metal there.
Yes, yes. I've done business with the Layman's a long time.
Yes, right.
Good people, Mr. Layman and Harold, another family. So I'm born and raised from around there. But what we can do is bring you large quantities if you need them to get your jobs done quickly where you can take your people and put them other places. Just the last thing in the world, the motorhead sitting around waiting on rock.
Mr. Dupree, the way that we have to do it is we have to bid.
Oh, I understand. I'm good with that. I love bids.
But I would love to know what you could bring me some right now for.
Well, number one, I just have to have a destination, pin drop destination, where it's going.
Well, I don't know about the pins, but they're clouds either.
Well, then I have young people that can assist you and I know. And so that's not a problem. You tell me what county road it is, how far down that county road you want to start it. Basic information, we, I can, I can get to that myself.
I'll be attached with you.
Yes, yes. That's my presentation. What we do and do well is deliver rock. And I do it every day. And I do millions of tons a year for the oil companies. Like I said, excellent safety rate. And we'll, and we'll give fair rates. I'm looking to handle all of rock in Yonkers County for all the commissioners there. I have a big yard there. So that's my presentation. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Number four, approve a minute. I read through them last night, Your Honor, and the only question I've gotten of discussing approving order prohibiting apple burning in Trinity County, I thought that we just brought the nineteen that we did not implement a fund. So in saying that, is that this?
There is no action.
Okay, no action. So I just, let's say, so move the document. I'll say. All in favor? Aye.
Number five, discussing act of proclamation recognizing sexual assault awareness. And proclamation is, whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that affects individual and families throughout Trinity County, and whereas the Trinity County Commissioners Court acknowledges the necessity of complaint support systems for survivors. Local agencies, advocates, and volunteers are tireless, working to provide education, prevention, and intervention services. Whereas community awareness and proactive measures and battle is reducing the incident of sexual violence. Whereas the following statistics will reflect the need for the community to embrace the two thousand twenty-five S A A P M theme, "Together We Act, United We Change," emphasizing the importance of collective action in addressing education and prevention, preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Number one was every sixty-eight seconds an American is sexually assaulted and every nine minutes the victim is a child. Meanwhile, only twenty-five of every one thousand predators will end up in prison. Nine out of the, of every ten victims of rape are females. Number three was fifty-five percent of sexual assault occurs at or near the victim's home. Number five was Trinity County is, per the State Auditor's Office, October two thousand twenty reported fifteen arrest charges, thirteen convicted, four deferred, two dismissed. Now therefore, the Trinity County Commissioners Court do have hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-five as sexual assault awareness and prevention month in Trinity County, and calls upon all residents to join in efforts to support survivors and prevent sexual assault.
So move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Is anybody here? Yes, y'all, y'all. My turn. Y'all want to tell our picture? You can come right through there. Oh, thank you, Secretary. Yes, sir. How are you doing? What did it? All right. I'm gonna take several of them because I've got several phones here. So one, two, three. Okay. And one more time, one, two, three. All right. Hey, can we do this?
Thank you very much.
You'd like to do one more? Shoot. Group, okay. Oh, the safe house. I see. All right. Give me just a minute. One, two, three. You can understand it. Oh, you got another one, didn't you? I got this phone. One, two, three. All right.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for being here today, too. I'm sorry, I have a job. How many people did y'all help last year? Do you know?
Overall, our, as you see, we had over thirteen hundred victims, four hundred and five of those were children.
Four hundred and five. That's, that's, y'all know it works. A great service, and we appreciate y'all.
Thank you very much.
Both on this? Okay, number six, discussing act on proclamation declaring the month of April Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas preventing children abuse and neglect is a common problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas a child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope with. Whereas the majority of the child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in a engaged and supportive community. Whereas the child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support that they need to raise the child in a healthy environment, and whereas the child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking. Whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children a safe nutrient environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as, I mean, succeeds because of partnerships created through social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement, and the business community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Trinity County Commissioners Court set through the county as does nearby proclaim April two thousand twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses are called upon to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
So move. Sir. All in favor? I don't get the sign. I'm sorry. Look like I would. Number seven, discussing act of closing the vehicle's inventory tax escrow bank accounts number one, two, five, one, three, and vehicle. And I think Ms. Nancy's the one's over there. You want to explain that to her, Ms. Nancy?
Sure. Good morning.
What up?
What?
Little house cleaning.
Little house cleaning. Yeah, Rita with tax suggested that we hand this over to the Brogdon, Trinity Brogdon Consolidated Tax Office. It's minimal collection. What is this vehicle inventory tax? So the dealers in the county pay us, we collect it, and then keep it in escrow savings, move it to escrow. But it's minimal, and here in Delance said that they would absorb that along to go with our property tax collection.
At no charge.
At no charge for the county, and it would get to, to bank accounts off of our books.
So move. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank y'all. Also, with the child safety registration fees that come through, the portion of the registration fees, they go to the special fund. The county's been able to help several of these organizations like Safe House, County Center, Casa, and Boys and Girls Club this year as well as last year, and they are very thankful. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Nancy. Number eight, act of Trinity County collection tax office, assortment, all of that.
That's the same.
Same thing.
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Number nine, discussing act on official bond. That's number. Number ten, discussing act on criminal and personal action forms.
Well, good morning.
No, sir.
You have a few personal action forms in your packet there. One's just a certificate of change for dating, one's bringing someone back, one was separation, and another is a resignation.
So move.
What, what is that, that last one, the resignation? It says county tree. What, what apartment was it?
Do you want?
Um.
It's a boot sale.
Right. Now what is it?
Oh, okay.
Just retired.
No, I read that the way you, you did too. I was confused. I didn't know.
Well, it had.
The treasury, so I guess that's another person.
Okay. I didn't recognize the name either, so.
Well, I didn't know anything about it, so I found out last night what's going on.
He, he, he did do it all that?
He's not able.
Oh, really?
Okay. Get a motion here, too. All in.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Discussing act approval, check.
Gentlemen, you have in your package a quick check file yesterday for the month of March. You see the grand total, which includes payroll in that as well, but then broken down is the vendor invoice totals, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, two thirty-nine, thirty. And at the back of the detailed report, it's broken down by department, fund, and vendor.
Hey, we talked a couple court meetings ago about it, but you think that we could, like we did a few years ago, set up a little workshop on, on this new program and, and kind of go over these reports and kind of teach us.
As soon as Lauren and I figure them out, we'll. Yes. Yes, they are.
A couple years ago, when I first become commissioner, we did it, and it helped me out a lot.
Right.
And I figured that since we changed, and maybe we could do that in the near future.
We can. We'll talk, yeah, we'll, we've got a, an audit for the, for fiscal twenty-four, the next company we're working with right now, and we'll go all the way through into April. And probably May. But we'll set up something.
Maybe summertime or something.
Yeah, and set up the time to, to go over some of the reasons why you bridge courts. We use them every day, so I'm getting used to them. But those, when you only see them, you know, once or twice a month. And I keep trying to change them a little bit each time to maybe finally get the right fit. This is just a check register, claim register. You'll see that by department, just to give you a quick overview on the very first page. And you're going to see payroll in here now. So you see payroll, and those are full-time employees. There are two paychecks in that month. So that's why you'll see full-time, electorally official, full-time, electorally official. So there are two payroll periods in that month. Then you'll see the supplements, auto allowance. Then you see what was charged each individual amount to conference and education. You'll also see any kind of postage, maintenance. Then you see your retirement, unemployment. So you look at that first one. Okay. So all the departments are broken down, just like they were before, county judge, road bridge one, two. And then it lists the description, the transaction date of when the payment was made, the vendor name, or what purpose was, and the amount. And that's, yes.
What is that? T C D R F.
That's your retirement fund.
Okay.
Texas, what is it? Texas County Retirement System.
Okay.
Your credits, Tommy, you'll see credit. That's if we've made an adjustment. Let's say we got a, oh, you got a refund. We put that back in. Or we posted it to your account in error, so we move it out. So no credited to your account. That's, that's, here's your quick lesson on this one. And we can drill down even further. So on each line item, we can then go another little, and it gives you exactly what was purchased in more detail. We can run those second by forty because otherwise it's your fourth.
It's meant like, uh, let's see, thirty-eight, ten, point zero, six, one, two, where it says I had a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and ten coming out of my machine, my road, different stuff like that totaled in.
Yes, yeah.
It's good. By the way, y'all need to check your pine grid. Come out often. Isn't that great?
But we probably gonna have to give a few after court about this rock. Me and Tommy's confused about this, this rock that we took out. Stephen, what's your recollection on how much we're paying Connors for the lot per ton?
I think about eight or nine dollars.
It's ten. It's ten.
I remember eight fifty.
What brought this up is I've been getting some stuff called in from mailings, and one of his drivers sent a new flyer that's posted up at Connors, a new price increase. So I wanted to check, make sure, because I know we're good for a year with them.
Right.
I want to make sure that they didn't go up on us like they said.
They're not supposed to. According to the contract, we're good till September. What would they do?
What I got with, I got with Randy yesterday, and he had to pull some invoices in that said ten dollars, but I just couldn't, I just didn't believe that, or couldn't remember that we, that we approved, that we paid ten dollars, you know, a ton. That's worth.
Now, I gave, I gave you that sheet.
Yeah.
Shows what the bids were when you selected those. I gave Tommy a list of that. I think the year before that, it was eight fifty. Then they went to ten.
When I first got here.
What, what doesn't make sense is Frost is eight fifty, and Connors is, is ten, and we wouldn't have done that.
Well, you selected Connors, and then, well, and then the next one's a secondary, so you could use either one.
I never saw a ten that I could, I.
Well, I did, I did go back in their invoices, and they came in a ten, and yet, and just the ones we paid ten, so ten.
I thought it was eight fifty.
Well, you could just go back and pull the minutes from the day, you know, and look and see.
We've got bid packet, that's why I pulled that. That was the result. You know, we've got the bid packet upstairs, and the year before.
If that's true, then you're starting all about Frost.
Because Frost is eight fifty.
Yeah, because eight, Frost is eight fifty.
Which one, that involves, to me, I believe you, you don't, because he won't go to Connors and walk the living road. I think they're up ten fifty, eleven dollars for any package.
Tony Hill told me that they closed one of the bids down.
So there's three out there, Frost, Connors, and I don't know what the other.
Did Connors close one of their bids down?
I don't know who the owner was, but he was saying one of them not operating anymore.
And then a lot of the crews of Connors, they closed one of theirs down. I think Connors has got two, three, or four different bids.
Now, we're going out for bids in May, or we can hear it earlier, but the contract ends in September, so the next one. And the gentleman's here, I get his part, but I didn't do that bid packet. What all the Frost is.
Okay. That was just a question I had.
Yes, that's fine.
I said, I just said one hundred and ten dollars.
Me. Now, I thought it said fifty, seventy.
Well, I'll start sort of my gap for all, I mean, the secondary, we can still do that, right?
Yes.
Is that the same distance?
Uh, five, seven miles difference.
Any other questions on the check register?
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Number twelve, discussing act of frequent disaster-related claims.
This is just a brief synopsis of those we've picked from March twenty-fourth to May the third. Here's the Commissioners Go Phone Call for Vicki regarding your money that came in.
Yeah.
So eighty-eight.
An eighty-one?
Eight-two.
Eighty-two? I approved another one. They're coming down frequently now. So once those two bid on Friday, they're, they're going to start.
Really? And all of that, all of it's being put in that water cap?
Yeah, I talked to Jessica about that.
Yes.
Really big?
Any more?
Not yet.
I have to pay them, huh?
But they're, I mean, they're finished with all the road bridges and, and then the culverts, but they're, Vicki said they got a phone call, it was Monday, and they said heads up, and it started to drop down, so.
You mean the culverts are separate from the?
Yes, Stephen has, the culverts totally separate from their.
So that big tower that I followed.
Will come under another.
Thirteen. Good deal.
But it's been approved.
Oh, yes.
Awesome. That's great. Thank Ms. Vicki and, and thank Rebecca.
So we're about to.
I'm not going to say one.
Ms. Vicki said they turned in her income, time, hours that she spent on that, and I believe they will reimburse us on that as well.
That's great. That's phenomenal.
Our work goes with that.
My second right here, too. All in favor? Aye. Number thirteen, discussing act on approval of budget amendments for February two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, current year budget, I have just one, the road bridge four. Commissioner Truss and I talked about that. We had a typo or it dropped a number by eighty thousand dollars, unfortunately. It was, it keyed in as eight thousand, nine ninety-five for his budget for his principal. It should have been eighty-eight thousand, nine ninety-five. So I'm just adjusting the budget. Line item is all I do.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number fourteen, discussing approval of budget amendment two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so we're getting ready to do the audit, and I needed to clean up a few things, so it doesn't look like we have a negative or, you know, deficit. And there was a large amount in insurance that hit last fiscal year. Over a million dollars.
Yes, I saw it. Say it again.
Over a million dollars.
In what?
Health, health insurance for employees.
So more you got, the more it's going.
Yeah, but we'd only budgeted, uh, a portion of that, so we'd already paid everything. And once we verified those amounts were correct, I'm just again doing cleanup, so it shows that we're not having deficit of that amount.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Vicki's a call.
Oh, yes, sir.
Number fifteen, discussing act in a local with Sanderson County for inmate housing.
Judge, I went back and looked at the old contract written, that fifty dollars an hour is the same, and, uh, we got everything, it's pretty much the same word. The only difference I saw was the seventy-five to sixty-five.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, you told me last week. That's the only reason we tabled it last weekend. What it is, we got out in the middle of, um, January, and we actually met with Fritz and marketed them. And, uh, we started negotiating price, trying to get the price down.
Judge, I appreciate you doing that, and, uh, it did save us ten dollars a day, and I appreciate all your efforts on that. And, uh, I'll make a motion with Frugie.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right.
Discussing act on approval of report for the month of two thousand twenty-five.
No, what happened is the last meeting, we skipped over the motion and actual approval.
So we just need to prove?
Yes.
Make a motion with Frugie. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And before we adjourn, where are we at, Ms. Shasta, on our, just, uh, birth certificates deal?
Right, so here we're following the way on the state where you are not high priorities for them right now because we're such small towns. But, um, we're still working on it, and it's gotta be discreet, you're real, so that's what I need to do.
Have you called us since we talked about it?
I have.
What did they tell you?
I actually had to leave a voicemail. I have not had a return call. But they will get another call and another email today.
And we'll talk about it the next week.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?